The September 28th, 2023 City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting is now called to order. We will begin by receiving communications from the public. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects to be placed in our later regular commission agenda for discussion and our possible action. Please note that public comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes per person. A red light will come on when your time has expired. Also, out of respect for those speaking, please refrain from any outbursts or interruptions which could disrupt the meeting and discourage others from speaking. I've got cards for three people. Mr. Randy Hale?
Hi, I'm Randy Hale. I live at 902 Applewood here in Friendswood. And this is my second appearance before you guys. The first one was my first ever speak to official people. And hopefully, I'm a little more articulate tonight than I was then. But y'all got a handout of something that I printed up. It's got several pages to it. And my comments and questions are all contained in that. But I wanted to say out loud a few things about it. First of all, I practiced this. There's no way I could read the whole thing in under three minutes. She timed me, and I'm too wordy for that. I go off track. But first of all, nobody in my subdivision is against developing property behind us. We love the fact that the thoroughfare is moved as far away from us as it possibly be. And that's all good. I live right at that corner of Castlewood and Applewood, and I'm already blowing it, I know. But we would like to keep the Castlewood dead end as a closed dead end street. And we would like to address drainage concerns that we may have. So, the proposed 40-acre project does not come close to meeting the criteria for regional detention they are asking for. My question is, and I know you can't answer me, but maybe y'all can do it in discussion. Would allowing regional detention for this project set a precedent, an unwanted precedent, for future projects? Second, the proposed plan calls for opening the current dead end and connecting Castlewood through the new subdivision to the new Parkway ultimately. I'm sure it's not going to be good for the existing Wilderness Trails Castlewood Drive residents. In fact, I doubt the folks in the new development, given the choice, would find this connection desirable. My question is, is the connection to Castlewood an option and up to the developer? Or is there some law or existing ordinance that's requiring the connection to be made? And the third question is, Castlewood, there's pipelines back there, will likely need to be elevated to meet the requirements across over the active fuel pipelines as it makes entry into the new subdivision if this connection were to be made. Would it not be better to leave the dead end as is on the Wilderness Trails subdivision side and let the developer terminate his road within the new subdivision and save the infrastructure cost? This has been brought up before, but I'll repeat. Similar situation exists at Friendswood Lakes and Mossy Stone. That was not connected to the Parkway because of drainage issues. Saved them, I was told, over $150,000. And that was in early 2000s money. And maybe the developer would like to be proactive in saving that money and preventing that connection. My time is expiring. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much.
Right on time.
Right on time, nailed it.
Deborah Winters-Cheney? If you could introduce yourself and then...
Yes, I'm Deborah Winters-Cheney, and I live at 1008 Applewood Drive. Randy pretty much addressed all of the issues, and I concur with everything that he said. I would like to point out, however, that Castlewood Drive is a narrow street. And if you have two cars parked across the street from each other, a fire truck cannot get through. It is not wide enough. And I'm very concerned about the residents on Castlewood Drive and how traffic would be affected for them. We have enough traffic issues during football season, which fortunately doesn't last too long. But nonetheless, it is an issue and also with the high school, with the parking and the driving down Castlewood. And I just would not want to add that to our neighborhood. I am the president currently of Wilderness Trails HOA. And we have had a lot of comments from residents that are very unhappy about the possibility of opening up Castlewood Drive. I understand from Murad that that was in the works for a very long time. It was not something that was ever discussed with people who were buying there. We were told about the pipelines, the active pipelines behind our homes, but not that that street was going to open up. I know that that's not a good excuse. And a lot of developers do not communicate some issues to people buying. But I just really, our neighborhood's been there since early 80s or late 70s. And I would like our neighborhood to stay enclosed in our neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joe Pollard?
Good evening, commission. My name's Joe Pollard. I live at 1903 Creekwood. Also wanted to talk about the road. From what I can gather, the route proposed that's related to the new neighborhood coming from 528 crosses Chigger Creek at 23 Wilderness Trail, where the land the city has already purchased. Then you hang a left onto the existing Wilderness Trail road, go down about a quarter mile, and then hang a right to the north on basically the west edge of the new proposed subdivision. The concern and the big problem I see is that section along Wilderness Trail Road that's already developed and has homes on it, there's at least a half dozen homes there. And putting a four-lane road in someone's front yard, obviously, there's severe financial impact on those families, quality of life, noise, crime, all kinds of negative issues. And a lot of that could be avoided with a slightly different route. If you go from the southwest corner of Wilderness Trails subdivision and basically veer off to the northwest, kind of an equidistant route from the residents on Wilderness Trail Road and the residents in Wilderness Trails subdivision, basically keeping the road as far away from the existing homes as possible would do a lot to minimize the damage that is going to be done to the area and the residents. That seems like a very reasonable thing to do. Quite frankly, I don't see why that's not what we're doing. And additionally, there's the factor of cost. It could up, may even be cheaper. I mean, now instead of going west and north, you're cutting across the triangle. It may be a shorter length overall. And you also don't have to tear out the existing asphalt, the cost for that on Wilderness Trail Road. So I would just like to share that. And I really think that doing an equidistant split between the two groups of existing residents makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak from the public? No? All right, next is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine and ministerial nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless the commissioners so request, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Item A, consider approving the minutes of the planning zoning regular meeting held on Thursday, August 24th, 2023. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Do we have a second? We have a motion, a second, all in favor? Motion passes. Next on the agenda are our action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules of Procedure, all action of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote with a simple majority of commissioners present at such commission meetings. We have one item tonight. Item A, consider the conceptual approval of a proposed master plan for the estates at Wilderness Trail, a new subdivision of 39.39 acres that also provides for the construction of a portion of Friendswood Parkway. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Aubrey, Becky, would you like to give the staff comments?
Yes, sir. So everybody's kind of had a chance to look at the plan in the backup material. We did have a minor change this afternoon. We realized that the Castlewood alignment wasn't quite right. So the developer tweaked it late this afternoon so that actually Castlewood was lining up with the wrong street. So it basically does away with the traffic circle and makes more of an L in the new subdivision. So that's what's on the screen now. Again, this is conceptual in nature. It is for a 41-lot subdivision. The water and sewer capacity is available for the development. Lines will have to be extended to make the connection. That will be reviewed by engineering staff during our normal processes. The applicant is also in the process of requesting permission to utilize regional detention from Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District. Regional detention is at the discretion of that board. They're the ones that grant permission. They're the ones that maintain the regional detention systems. And so if they grant the request, then the property owner will be responsible for conveying the water to whatever system they agree upon. Tree mitigation would not be required. There's no common areas within the subdivision. And a traffic impact analysis would not be required for the subdivision. TIA is required if you generate 5,000 trips per day or more. And the density of this development wouldn't hit that threshold. The extension of Friendswood Parkway obviously is a significant investment in our community. This proposal actually avoids demolition or eminent domain or anything of any existing homes. The city did purchase 23 Wilderness Trail this year to try and alleviate that. So it is beneficial that we're not having to take out any homes, that all the homes that are there can exist. Again, with moving the location of the Parkway away from the subdivision, it's not going to back up to the Wilderness Trails subdivision. This master plan, again, it's just conceptual in nature for the commission tonight. It's been a long time since we've actually reviewed a conceptual or master plan. And actually, this is under our new requirements that we made in our subdivision ordinance that we took from another city. So it's our first official master plan application. So you'll see this again when they come for preliminary plat and final plat. It'll come back to the commission. That's the point, where we'll make sure that their lot sizes are correct, their street widths are correct, all the easements are dedicated that are necessary for the development.
Okay. Is the applicant here, would they like to say anything?
Available for questions if you have any.
Okay. So we'll move on to discussion. Commissioner Rives?
I didn't want to start the discussion. I think the whole thing to remember tonight is that this is conceptual. So preliminary, very before preliminary, this is just the concept. So looking at it from terms of subdivision ordinances and what our codes are, there's nothing that says we have to extend Castlewood Drive. I know that's why you guys are all here. But there's also nothing that says they can't do that. So there's not a law preventing them from doing that. The early plats for your subdivision show another phase where that was to continue. And I failed to look to see how many houses that would have been in that phase, but I'm sure it was more than 40.
Marcus, I think it connected straight to Friendswood Parkway pretty quickly right at that point, because Friendswood Parkway was going to be on the other side.
But there were houses back there as well, I think.
That's true.
I like the new concept better than the one I was given earlier. I think that will throw a little bit of a wrench into people wanting to do through traffic through there. But I don't see a reason to decline it or to vote against this just because of that, because I don't see anywhere in the cities that prevents them from doing that. Does that make sense? There are other issues. My biggest issue would be drainage and how are we dealing with drainage? And I know there's already talks about that, the conveyance from that area to the creeks. So I know that's being discussed already. So I'm trying to think. There's other things like parkland and all that that we can get into with the preliminary plat and all that kind of thing. I like that there's bigger lots, of course. That's one of my pet peeves. I'm trying to make sure I hit everything I wanted to talk about. I believe a question was asked about two or three entrances into the subdivision. And somebody clarified that tonight, that the fire marshal requires more than our zoning ordinances do. So while the zoning ordinance might require two, the fire marshal needs three. I guess that's all I had on my list, but...
Good. Mr. Sessom?
Okay, so just clarifying with you, Aubrey, and I should know this, but I don't. This is going to be the new normal on new subdivisions coming in that will see a conceptual plan like this?
It could be. It's not required, but...
But if it's a certain size, we make a reasonable judgment, and this will be an extra step. We don't normally do this. That's why I was a little surprised. But I should have known, because I was part of the committee that put that together. I apologize.
That's okay. Well, like, so West Ranch and Avalon, we did planned unit developments for their zoning. And so we had layouts for those subdivisions with their zoning. This one's just zoned single-family residential. And like I said, the master plan's not required, but it's a nice heads-up.
And just to emphasize, so since it's not a PUD, it'll follow all the normal laws or regulations of the City of Friendswood and meet all the... Good.
Yeah, for single-family residential, yes.
Mr. Tanos, can I bother you to come up here? I just had a few questions that probably only you can answer. They're not going to be hard, I hope. So there's properties near here that have oil and gas impacts. Are there any existing oil and gas issues associated with this?
No, we're clear of any in oil or gas in the phase.
So there was no drilling done on this property at all?
Phase one is completely clear.
Good, good. That's good to hear. I presume if the regional detention is not approved, this layout will change quite a bit.
I leave that all up to the engineers at this point until I get word that it does not work.
Yeah, I understand, I understand, yeah. And just for everyone, we don't have any say on the detention issues. That goes to the Galveston County Drainage District. And they have their rules and laws, and I won't pretend to understand them. But they will make a decision on that. And my assumption is that this layout hinges on a favorable decision on what you're asking for.
We are preliminary currently.
Yeah, okay. The Friendswood Parkway, that's now been moved away from Wilderness Trails and modified all the way over. I would have thought that would be a big celebration for the people in Wilderness Trails that have all these years been living with the idea that there'd be a Parkway right next to them.
A straight line is certainly much easier.
And that's right, yeah. And I think that always, to be honest, I was surprised when I learned that it had moved. I hadn't really understood all the impacts of that. So are you building one lane or two lanes of this future two-lane highway of Friendswood Trails? I understand you are paying for this 800 feet of Friendswood Parkway.
Currently, the only thing I have right now is the dimensions of that. I haven't had a road plan for that just yet.
Murad, do you have some insight on that?
So we're in preliminary discussions about a tax increment reinvestment zone with Mr. Tanos on this property. If we were to move forward with that, he would build the full Parkway as shown.
So there's enough room to build all four lanes?
All four lanes, as well as dedicating the right-of-way necessary along Wilderness Trails on his property so that when we do get a grant or work with another agency to extend Friendswood Parkway out from 528, that we can make that turn and build the four-lane boulevard within the right-of-way.
Got it. I saw that it was 110 feet wide. I was going to go out to Friendswood Parkway and try to walk it over, but I thought I might be killed. And so I just thought I'd ask a question.
Yeah, we added the 10-foot green space on my side as well.
Okay, good, good. You're planning on putting sidewalks along Friendswood Parkway as well as inside the subdivision?
I'm happy to. I'm happy to do whatever plan is required of me.
Yeah, I think most of Friendswood Parkway that I'm seeing, maybe all of it, has sidewalks on the south side of 528. So I would hope we continue that to hopefully make our city more walkable. We don't seem to do much walking here in Friendswood, but we want to give people the opportunity.
I don't have that plan yet.
Okay, I saw on the, not this one, but the one we received originally, it had a little, it's kind of hard, it's a cartoon kind of thing, but it showed that what looked like a sidewalk to me, but I wanted to confirm.
There will be sidewalks on Friendswood Parkway.
You're the man. That's a very clear answer, Murad. Thank you, my friend.
The problem with preliminary plans is they're preliminary.
Actually, there is.
Yeah, I understand.
Showing them right now.
Yeah, on the one that we had before with the roundabouts. Yeah, but this one doesn't seem to, anyway, that's fine. So just for me, it's about 800 feet. What I estimated was that's about one-tenth of the amount that we need total to get from 528 to 2351. So it's a good start. Murad, while you're up there, maybe you can describe a little bit. Is the plan to take over part of Wilderness Trails and make it part of Friendswood Parkway on this turn?
It is. And as I explained to the residents over the last several months, the intent is to impact as few existing residents as possible. So we took the property that's left to be developed and the route potentially that the roadway would go and split it right down the middle. So this is equidistant from Creekwood Estates as it is to Wilderness Trails. Obviously, as I've said multiple times for the longest period of time, that whoever builds first gets to dictate where that roadway goes. And part of the impetus for doing a conceptual plan here is to get this committed to some extent by the developer, that it will be located here. If the property to the north of this were to develop first and they decided to put it immediately adjacent to Wilderness Trails, well, then that would dictate where the connection point would take place. So this was intended to sort of head that off with a pass if at all possible. You heard Aubrey mention the traffic impact analysis tonight. The city did fund as part of their budget for FY24 a traffic impact analysis for this area as well as others throughout the city. But as Commissioner Rives pointed out, the laws don't dictate that connections be made or not be made. It's up to the private landowners if they're abutting public right-of-ways to make those tie-ins. If the city were building the roadway, we would have that TIA completed before that decision was made. But ultimately, our timeline may or may not coincide with the developer's timeline. The more we can get the roadway built by others, the less expensive it will be for the City of Friendswood. And the better we'll make our cost-benefit analysis when we do go out for grants to get matching funds from the state or federal partners, depending on whatever the case may be.
Got it. So what I saw is, if I understand it right, the people at the subdivision, the Creekside Estates, I guess it is, would be coming out of their subdivision on Wilderness Trails, and then it would change names to Friendswood Parkway and then back to Wilderness Trails again if they went along the route that they go today.
So as it stands, if this were to be built tomorrow, the reality of the connections to 528 or to Pearland Parkway in the future are several years down the road.
Right.
They would approach the intersection of Friendswood Parkway with Wilderness Trails as a direct intersection that you would see anywhere else with a stop sign to make a left-turn movement to go north or to go continue straight to Greenbrier down Wilderness Trails. In the future, when we get funding to do the extension from 528 to this point, you will see a more of a sweeping curve. And Wilderness Trails from Creekwood Estates would dead end into Friendswood Parkway with a stop sign. But Friendswood Parkway, the curves will be flattened out to some extent so where it's a more gradual.
Yeah. But they're basically going to follow the route that's currently a road, but it'll be a different road. Yeah, and two-lane, a four-lane and all that, which they'll...
And pipelines were mentioned this evening. Obviously, blank canvases are easy to work with. Existing restrictions provide an added layer of complexity that developers, the city has to work around in order to achieve projects' goals. The land, the way the pipelines go through that property limit where you can put the lot layouts. And that dictated a lot of this. When we asked the developer to move the roadway as far away from possible from the existing neighborhoods, that limited the layout to some extent. That's why you have what you see here.
Understood, understood. The concern I had on the Castlewood, if we weren't, if you didn't make that connection, there'd be 40 homes, 41 homes that you're putting in that would then have only one way out. In addition, Creekside Estates would only have one way out. So if there was a blockage on Wilderness Trails, you'd have 80-plus, however many individual houses are along Wilderness Trails, all dependent on a single route in and out until we get the connection all the way to 528, which may be soon, but our history is it takes longer than we think. And so I'm concerned just having an emergency outlet for them on Castlewood. I agree. I drove Castlewood today, again, with one of our city commissioners. And it is a narrow street. It is not optimal. But we have to do what looks like the best thing we can do, so... I appreciate what's going on here. And I think... That's all my, that's all my, side issue, doesn't affect the decision. Are you planning on putting up a sound barrier along Friendswood Parkway?
Yes.
Are you? Okay, good, good. I live in a subdivision along 528, and nice to have a sound barrier. And so...
Yes, both sides.
So the future section of it along Wilderness Trails would have a sound barrier as well as the section of Friendswood Parkway that's getting built as part of this project.
Excellent, okay. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Mr. Mann?
First, I want to thank everybody for coming out and giving your thoughts on it. And thanks for both of y'all. But I think they've covered all the questions that I had. I just wanted to say one more time, though, that the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District does a fantastic job. And they will, they leave no stone unturned. And so when they go through this and make that decision, I have the utmost confidence in them on the drainage portion of this. And that's it, thank you.
Mr. Conrad?
I agree with them. I mean, everything, I think, has been answered and covered. The change, the last change that was made makes it a lot more desirable. And I think it will work a lot better. A lot of people should be happy with that. Thank you.
So I have a few questions. The bigger lot, what are the six acres, I believe, right? Is that there in case you do have to do onsite retainage?
Multiple options available, but I have to wait until I get engineers' calls.
I was just curious on that. The other part, with the approval, you get a two-year timeframe for, something has to happen within two years, correct? So at the end of that two years, this expires. If we commit to this plan for the route of the road, right? What happens if this project somehow fails, right?
So I mentioned to council a few weeks back, I do a lot of hedging of bets. When I'm asked to complete a project, what are the funding sources? What are the opportunities? Who are the potential partners that we have in these efforts? We do have an HGAC-funded alignment study that is set to get kicked off here shortly that will determine the alignment if there were no development to take place. Obviously, if Lewis moves faster than those efforts with HGAC and Texas Department of Transportation, then he would dictate where that alignment takes place. So if, in that time period, if the two years elapses and this expires and this is not a viable project, then we will determine the alignment based upon those efforts.
Very good. I mean, I have confidence it'll go forward. I'm just, you just never know, right?
Yes, sir.
So just wanted to ask that question, but I think that's what I have. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, next on our agenda is communications. And we'll start by announcing that the NICS Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meetings have been scheduled for Thursday, October 12th, 2023, and Thursday, October 26th, 2023. Item B, the August 2023 DRC report was in our backup material. And next, city council liaison?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Aubrey, go with communications from the commissioners, apologize. Commissioner Sessom?
Yeah, I have really nothing to, I am going to have to miss October 12th. I'd be out of town, unfortunately. And I know there's some pretty big things on the agenda that one too, but sorry. I have nothing to report.
Mr. Mann?
Nope, happy to be here, thank you.
Mr. Conrad?
Nothing at all.
Mr. Rives?
I'll be here for the 12th, but it will be my anniversary, so I'm hoping it'll be short and sweet. My wife's not going to be happy.
Very good. For me, I do, I'll repeat what Commissioner Mann said. I appreciate everybody coming and voicing your concerns and everybody, both sides of the discussion, so... Aubrey, you have anything?
No, sir.
Becky? Karen? Okay? Okay. With that, thank you, everyone, for attending this evening, and the September 28, 2023 Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting is now adjourned.